Good afternoon. We will start the pre-meeting of West Jordan Planning Commission for October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have four out of the seven commissioners present and Commissioner Shelton has been excused. So we'll go ahead and start with the pre-meeting. How long is training going to be tonight? Okay, yeah, we've got a pretty light agenda anyway, so. Okay Denise, you're on.
I'm, go ahead. Denise has asked me to present on the impact study on Becky, on the budget list and that's one of my my duties that they asked me to kind of facilitate was this impact fee process. So we kind of wanted to walk you through what impact fees are and what has happened recently in terms of making some adjustments for the city's impact fees. So new development, it goes within the city, it generally it generates an increased demand for city infrastructure. So impact fees, I recognize them, it's for more growth, pays for that increased demand on city infrastructure. And it's a one-time charge imposed to basically have that new growth pay for those increased demand on on the services and infrastructure. So let's then charge these seven impact fees in different, different areas and the impact fees are governed by state code under, under state code number six A. But we've started that state code and they're going to make it to work with us through this to get through the flying complaints with the city that we state with maintenance. So what will be used impact fees for, basically for anything that is public infrastructure, physical infrastructure and not in any one of these areas. It has parks, fire stations, when we build a new substation for police. We have these roads that are in age, we put in because of development, restore or treatment for, for those, those. It can also be used to pay for impact fee studies and updates to your study so that we can make sure that we are charging appropriate costs and to make development as well. But we can like this as impact fees for operational. There is a provision that allows us to use impact fees for every truck because those are a significant more than a thousand dollars to be permitted, but we're able to use those. We have some of the current projects in our just three years of main store project, so it can offer us for doing those parks around the park and those parks to finish up some of the development in that area over there. And these are, I will use impact fees to pay for the bond payments and put that on into our team list. More particular, Station fifty-four, that substation, it's probably say. For roads, we have lots of different projects and roads and the impact fees are only a partial percentage of most of our projects and so it's pretty festive like that. We have different funding sources or multiple funding sources for some of those projects because what I've said specifically in infrastructure projects when it comes to transportation. On the utility side, something I, the other projects are partially funded by impact fees and then also paid from by utilities or utility such as to receive and other things like that. And we can see those are, there's a lot of, of those are projects when it comes to things like water tanks. Those things have to be imposed generally be their homes for everybody to, so you have to have infrastructure in post version. So the impact fees give us a mechanism to charge for things like that, so we can have those. The power needs to be able to provide the infrastructure for the, for the, for the place. We want to show the estimates, I mean, some balances for each of these impact fees funds. They have, generally, it's, the state code gives us seven years to spend the funds that we collect through impact fee. And if those aren't, then we can, we can, we can, we can, we can pay for, we can and for the, when we have selected those and how to do, to spend those funds and so stick on top of it projects you need to get out. You will have impact fees. And some of these fund, that is just here, and that's pretty due because to the fact that these fees have not been updated since two thousand and seventeen. And so you can imagine that with cost inflation and all the commitment and all the projects that have been happening. And there's very big drop on, on those funds. And so we take the city in two thousand and twenty-one, it, through bridge, to an R B process to have a consultant update on impact fees. And we're out to do a new impact fee study, new impact fee process. So people look excited, Denise, we've got, the consultant is L R B Public Finance Advisors, which is putting it on his list yet. That was something that happened to you. But they worked through their process with us and followed, following state code. We probably noticed that we were born for deal of process and then we virtually, like, welcome to the city, collecting information that was needed through the master plans, through the usage data, through source, all reports, through the place of file, all those sorts of data. You know, you do analyze what demand levels on those different areas. So we took that process and they put together a, a, which was, presented on the Dr. Public Council in September of this year. There is a ninety-day waiting period before those fees can take them. So while they have been adopted, they're not such to charge until touch up pretty first. And the reverse rate of community to develop sections, we have parks and police together in one neighborhood. And then utilities and other, for, and other. We're going to be doing the roads and transportation impact fees as soon as the master plan has been updated, so that we have accurate to, to, for those. Again, we're going to do research, reviews on impact fees every one year and make changes and so that we're not having those long gaps in between. So we don't have to make those huge adjustments and changes in, in each fee with such an impact to, to the community.
If you don't mind, I'm going to chime in here for just a moment. On this last slide, where you see so many negative sun balances in water and sewer, remember that Becky just informed you about a lot of this infrastructure requires that we pay for it in advance and we put it in and we base our impact fees based on that reimbursement for that project, right? So sometimes we'll bond for a project, like our next fire station, it's likely we'll bond for it and we'll recover the bond payments through impact fee collection. However, in water and sewer, we don't have the bonding capacity with our utility revenue to put a bond out and so we have chosen to use reserves out of the utility fund to build this infrastructure to support the new development that's occurring. And then we will recover those utility funds through the collection of the impact fees. Good strategy, not good strategy? Not sure, honestly, it wouldn't be my, my favorite way of financing this, it would be to bond for them. However, we just do not have the bonding capacity in either of these utilities to do so. So that's why you're seeing like negative twelve million dollars, negative nine million dollars. We have that huge ten million dollar sewer line expansion that's going in on the southwest quadrant so that we can look towards bringing in some more industrial and manufacturing development. We can't do it unless that's there. And in fact, they won't even look at us, right? They won't even speak to us unless we've got that infrastructure in place prior. On water, we've been putting in a lot of storage tanks. When I started with the city four years ago, we were in dire need of some water storage. We were less than twenty-four hours of water storage available. Since I've been with the city, we've put in six water tanks and we have five more to go. So there's a lot of development, but there was also a lot of infrastructure demand that was not met previously. So we're taking care of that now, but financially we're strong as a water and sewer fund overall, right? So when you have the utility and the impact fee together, you're very strong and you're very, you've got a strong foundation there. The impact fee fund itself is in the negative, but will be collected as we have impact fees paid through that development process. Which is why it's really important, sorry, when council received the study in two thousand and seventeen, one of the things that that councils have the opportunity to do is adopt a fee different than the recommended fee in the study, right? They can say, I don't want to charge that fee, that it can't go higher, but they can go lower. They can say, well, we're worried that if we adopt this fee, it'll slow down development or we're worried if we adopt this fee, you know, this or that. It does agree with the methodology, whatever it is, and they can nebulously say, we want to discount it thirty percent. We want to discount it by whatever amount. The, the water and sewer impact fees were not adopted at the recommended levels in two thousand and seventeen and and the council has changed that strategy and people have changed on the council and they adopted the rates going forward as they were proposed. And I do believe that we will see some stronger financial sustainability in the impact fees moving forward. So I'm grateful for the council and their support through that process.
And Denise, to clarify as well, when you report annually, the, the reporter, you'll see me report the impact fee and utility fund together, right? So it doesn't show these, these negative sun balances, but we think that whole internal management of finances of the budget.
I answer a question for you Denise. What capacity do we need to have to bond for water and sewer?
Interestingly, it requires that the revenue source that's dedicated be a hundred and twenty percent of the debt. So what you'd have to take is the water utility revenue. You can't bond on impact fees because they're too unpredictable, right? So you have to bond on the water utility revenue and the water utility revenue less operations have to be one hundred and twenty percent of files, the debt service minimum. And that makes it difficult because that means that we have to take a profit every year, the utility fund of twenty percent and it feels it feels like a pretty good burden on the utility payers, right? So we would have to increase those utility rates so that we could see the profit of twenty percent per year and keep putting it in reserves. We could use it on capital projects after spending reserves, but every year we would have to have one hundred and twenty percent of the debt service payments. Very good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions so far?
Okay, thanks. So we just kind of want to highlight each of the fees that were adopted. As they, as they go forward on the presentation. Let's go forwards, there we go. Parks, for, so for parks, let's try to example of how these are calculated. Parks are generally calculated using a growth-driven model. And so that calculates the loan service based on existing conditions within the city and within the area. And of course, the intent is to perpetuate that same loan service into the future, for all these new new developments that are coming. So those impact fees are not calculated to provide unnecessary. Parks is calculated based on population growth and the number of households. And parts of the, the, one thing we need is that it's not charged to, 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 to have a charge for single family and multifamily residential, but not so that it's very difficult. From the eyes in Leeds and in Oregon, the, the study is based on calls for service. And so you can see on, on the same, yes, they would charge for residential because I, but commercial law is going to be a, a higher demand on police and so, you know, a higher calls for service than safe conduct. So you can see how those, those dollars now are related to different types of demand based on.
Another question, sorry.
Yeah, at least on those calculations.
Thank you. Well, where do HOAs fall in this? Are they considered multifamily, single family or commercial?
They're considered single family as long as they're single family homes.
Okay.
The interesting piece on this, just to give you a perspective of how this study changed methodology and the changes between two thousand and seventeen and now, police impact fee previously was thirty-three dollars. And the fire one was twenty-one dollars. So you're going to see, you're seeing a very dramatic increase in some of them. Others like parks were more close, right? They adopted a fee and it was, I don't know, I think this one increased thirty-five percent, right? So we saw a thirty-five percent increase in the park impact fee, but on the police and fire impact fees and on the water and sewer impact fees, we saw a much more dramatic change.
Whereas I believe it's the stormwater wouldn't say down based on the previous study. And so, so it's good to, to keep these updated frequently so that we can make those adjustments to the way that it's actually happening in terms of the city. Water and, the primary demand, you know, water impact fee is calculated based on that, when you use. So that'll be, that will be, of the, of the meter size. And similarly with, with sewer impact fee, that's going to be based on, it was living on today, so, yeah. Like O G D.
So let me tell you, an E R U is an equivalent residential unit. So it's what is assumed the water use is for a single family home in our city.
So, yeah, that water connection is based on. And then the last one was stormwater and that was based on, on a group in terms of impervious surfaces and they calculate how much of that is going to be with stormwater being, versus, so you'll see those.
We get this question a lot about impervious surface, like how is that defined as a city? And it's anything that's compacted and doesn't allow the stormwater to absorb into it. So anytime concrete is laid or the ground is covered with something and it does not allow the water to be absorbed in at the same rate as it would have been if it had been undeveloped. So any landscape is not included in this that is, you know, just a regular grass or whatever. But if they've got a crushed gravel and it's a parking lot or something like that, that's considered impervious surface. We do recalculate this on a regular basis with G I S because people make improvements and we don't know, right? They don't call us and go, hey, I, I changed my lot, right? They added an A D U or whatever it might be. And so G I S does a satellite image and then they go over all the areas and then they give us changes once a year. So we do change that in utility billing.
And I got kind of a silly question. When these impact fees for the A D Us, if they are actually putting an A D U in during the original construction, is that a separate unit or is that just considered as part of the one single family?
We, yeah, I don't think, well, state legislatures said that we are not allowed to charge impact fees for any A Ds.
Okay, I thought that was the case.
However, they do get built that, that impervious surface and their stormwater calculation.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Any great questions? Is there anything else that we can help answer tonight?
I do have another question. So impact fees are charged, have been charged for these developments that take years and years and years to build. Obviously with inflation, the costs that we assessed in the beginning, the impact fees in the beginning are going to be vastly different from when the development ends. How do you make up that differential or do you, the city?
We collect them at the time the permit is issued and so entitlement is very different than permitted, right? So if they're entitled to build, we don't have, we will have not had collected the impact fees. There are a lot of assumptions in the study and I think we should probably email you the study because it's very readable. That's one of the things I love about, oh my gosh, I can't remember their new name, L Y, L R B. It's terrible. I don't know which initial came out. L R B, Public Finance. Is that their studies are readable and understandable. And so we've made some assumptions in there, right? We're making some assumptions on Jones Ranch, we're making some assumption, or Dry Creek at the Highlands is now what it's called. Making some assumptions on Wood Ranch. And then moving that forward for a short period of time and then we will update that fee based on that. So we're saying, what will we need for this time period? What are the construction dollar costs for that need? And then let's move those fees as, as we go through that process for development. So a Jones Ranch and a Wood Ranch are probably fifteen-year projects, right? And so their impact fees will be different based on the time periods that they put that development in.
So and at the end of the entire development, the last home is sold, the last lot is developed, the city does not come out and at a deficit that because those impact fees are charged as they move along?
That's the intention, okay. Yes. And that's why you should be updating your impact fee study every one to two years. We should just be doing that on a regular basis. And that's also why for on the developer side, that there's a ninety-day waiting period. This was really hard for a lot of people to understand. They're saying, well, we're adopting it right now and it doesn't go into effect until January first. But a lot of the developers have pro formas and they have capitalized loans and venture capitalists invested at a certain understanding of a profit margin on a home and you can't just shift that over overnight. So it gives developers time for them to update their pro formas about what the cost of construction is before they pull a permit. So I think that it's, it's a good balance between understanding the needs of the development as well as understanding the needs of the city.
And how do we rate compared to other cities?
We did do a comparison to that and while you can't really compare apples to apples, city to city, because the infrastructure needs are different, right? But, but we are in line with many of the high-growth cities. So we're in line with a South Jordan, we're in line with a Harriman and we're in line with a Riverton. And those are the ones we were most concerned about. We're not as in line with a West Valley City, but because they've got some of that infrastructure already in place.
I noticed that the park impact fees are in the positive seven million. Can you explain that?
Absolutely. So we, we had not done a new growth project for quite a long time. So a lot of the park development that we'd done was just enhancing parks that we already had or they weren't identified as related to new growth. They were identified on a master plan as related to enhanced activity and not new growth. That seven million dollars is going to be spent very quickly as we get that Wheels Park up and running and the expansions to Roundwood Park. It may also be used as a portion to incentivize a recreation center out on that west side as well. So it's been earmarked and that's actually only three and a half years of collections of the park impact fees.
But that's what's already been collected, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and it's going to be used up in a seven-year period?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We watch that very closely.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you anything about finance or impact fee. What your, the work that you do is critical, you're the first step towards that development and we appreciate you wanting to know more about what we do on the other side. So thank you for your time.
Thank you Denise and Becky.
Yeah, I guess I'm supposed to step in here, huh? Would the commission like to take a look over the handful of items we have on here in advance or take a brief recess?
Yeah, we have two minutes.
Okay, we'll take a break and come back to the regular meeting. All right, we will call to order the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three West Jordan Planning Commission meeting. All commissioners present except Commissioner Shelton, who is excused today. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from October third, two thousand and twenty-three. Discussion or motion, Commissioner Quinn?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Commissioner Winn?
My second motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Quinn, a second from Commissioner Quinni, second from Commissioner Winn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda, public hearing with final action by the planning commission. This is for the Wood Ranch Plat Three subdivision and subarea plan, seventy-four hundred south, S R one eleven, preliminary subdivision plant, hundred and four lots and twenty-four point oh three acres. P C H zone. We have third cadence, Gary Langston is the applicant, Ray representing the city. Would you like to come up and present your application for us, sir? Appreciate it.
There we go. So I'm Gary Langston, the third cadence, obviously been here a couple of times. We represent the development team. This is our third plat that we're bringing before you. It's the, I guess, the balance of our first takedown that we purchased from the Wood family. It's a, I think this one's also multi, or single-family detached. I don't think we, no, wait, excuse me. We have a few townhomes off to the right, sorry. Hundred and four units. It's the same mix of product types. And excited to say we've selected five different old building groups now and we're working with them to get things in place to continue on with our building or with homes as we finish infrastructure. We're actively working on the masquerading for the first hundred or so acres and we're starting to put infrastructure in the ground for the first plat. We'll put out plat two to bid here in the coming weeks and then plat three will follow later on. So fairly straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for, for us as the development team. If we can clarify anything, happy to do so.
Questions for the applicant? This being plat three, you may not be far enough along on plats one and two. How are things looking as far as selling lots? Are you at that point yet with plat one?
No. We hope to, this all depends upon weather and the ride of things, but we hope to get home building started. Late winter, more than likely it'll trickle into the spring. So that might mean we could have a grand opening as early as next summer, possibly next fall. So we're hoping that come possibly next fall. Um, so we're hoping that come this time next year, we're, um, we might have our first resident. That, that's a big might, um. We've found as we started doing the mass grading, it's a lot rockier than we thought. Um, it's really slowed us down quite a bit. Um, and some frankly, some pretty big rocks, you know, car-sized things that are popping up out of the dirt. Uh, so anyway, that, that's what we're shooting for is hopefully sometime next year, I'm telling you, we're at least have models completed and we're close to having our first homeowner move in.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the update. We'll call you up if there's any other questions.
Okay.
Ray, take it away.
Thank you. Um, again, this is the plat three. You've already seen plats one and two. And I think this diagram just kind of shows you where plat three, uh, will fit in with, uh, plats one and two that have been, um, preliminary approved by the planning commission. So the, the area that's up on the, the, the top of the picture, the top of the drawing is, um, basically the, the TLS. It's the, the open space will be dedicated, um, indeed to the city. The city will be responsible for maintaining that in the future. So it's, uh, it, this is all complies with the, uh, master development plan, master development agreement that was, you know, put into place back in twenty twenty-one. Doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but, um, kind of surprised when I plugged it, plugged it in. Um, and enforcement found multi-family townhome residential units. The other thing is, is that, um, tonight you'll, uh, you'll be approving the preliminary uh, plat for plat three and then also the sub-area plan that goes along with that. So just wanted to make that. Um, yeah, just if you wouldn't mind making that clear in the motion. Appreciate it. But other than that, we just don't have any concerns or issues with it and our recommendation is for approval.
In, in one minute, can you, uh, clarify the difference between the sub, the sub-area plan and the subdivision? Uh, the preliminary subdivision plan?
The plat, the plat itself is, is, is this, um, the sub-area plan is the document that just puts into play, um, all, it talks about the open space, who's responsible for the open space, the types of, uh, dwellings that will be put or just, uh, the types of dwellings that will be put on the, the individual lots. So it's really, um, a document that just kind of, uh, supports what will be and kind of defines, um, what will be built. Uh, there is also, uh, the master development agreement. Within that, there's a, um, uh, the, uh, developer will be responsible for approving the different building types that go on there, but that sub-area plan just gives some general, um, general, um, examples of what will be built.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, this has been noticed as a public hearing. So we will now open this up to the public if they would like to, uh, share thoughts, uh, or address the planning commission. Uh, if you are online, feel free to raise your hand. All right. Well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Thomas?
I know we've seen these, uh, plats before and I know they don't really differ a whole lot. Um, if you guys don't have any questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I have a question. Um. I'm just wondering, how much of this land does, does, uh, do they own? That they, you know, like where's the boundaries of the land that they own? That the developer, it wants to develop on?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of property in there. Maybe that's something we can have just a quick summary next.
It's, it's almost everything in the yellow that's shown here, um, with the exception of that area on the north.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
It's the area that's basically in the yellow with the exception of, I don't know if I can show, yeah, there it is, with the exception of this right here. Now it's, it's like six thirty, something.
And it's always been raw land? Never farming or anything? It's been farmed.
It's been farmed and to the north of those, like, says seventy or so, there's a major gravel extraction operation that's been, uh, going on for quite a few years now. So it's mostly been dry farm, wheat farm, mountains, and then the gravel. You can see at the top is a, a gravel pit that's still very active. And but it'll eventually be developed with the, the later phases of Wood Ranch, so.
Okay, because I'm just wondering, I mean, I know this probably doesn't have anything to do with the planning mission, but, um, it seems like the homes could have been spread out more.
Um, that's, yeah, that, that horse left the barn three years ago. So probably, probably what, rather than hold this up because you really can't. Because their complaint is that we probably, uh, in one of the meetings for you particularly, Commissioner Richardson, probably should have a, a brief overview of what Wood Ranch is and what Jones Ranch are. Go over the master development plans were approved long before you were on the commission. And I, I think that that's probably our error or not. Because all of the rest of your planning commissioners were on the planning commission. You were the unfortunate one that's not. And so you're kind of looking at it from the outside. Yeah, they're all very aware of it, so.
Just a quick question. Is, is it going to be developed all around it with, um, more homes and businesses all around it? Well, I mean, there's still some, a lot of open land that can be done.
There's significant, all the hillsides, uh, will, the hills will be left as, uh, that T D O S is transfer development open space. So now there'll be a significant amount of open space in Wood Ranch. And so, um, I think that probably next maybe we'll plan on talking about Wood Ranch master plan just for your edification.
All right, thank you.
In fact, those two red areas that the, on the north there, those are T D O S open space. Um, so each time there's a, a plat with sub area, then there's a portion that's this T D O S, basically larger open space. And then within each of the two lower areas that have the, the housing, those have some smaller, uh, pieces of open space that are more actively used by the people that, that live there. So.
Commissioner Thomas?
Okay. I move the planning commission approve the preliminary master, or excuse me, major subdivision plaque and the preliminary subarea plan for Wood Ranch plat three subdivision located approximately twenty-four point zero two three acres on seventy-four hundred south and SR one eleven with the recommend, uh, requirements and approval listed in the report. Second.
Ray, does that mean what you're after? Excellent. Okay, we've got a, a motion, Commissioner Thomas, a second, Commissioner Quinny. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, uh, thank you. Third item on the agenda is the text amendment for the streetscape walls, continued from October third. I believe the recommendation here is to table this to a
Data uncertain.
Commissioner Quinny?
I move to table this to a data uncertain.
Commissioner? Ta, uh, Lynn?
Second.
Oh, that was pretty quick. I think he was jumping on it. Uh, uh, a motion, Commissioner Quinny, a second, Commissioner Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Thomas?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
We are adjourned.